We are having our first meeting of the City of San Marino Planning Commission for this year. I'm gonna just briefly go through procedure and then we'll get started. Let's see, I guess, first of all, can we have a roll call of commissioners?
Sure, alternate commi- or, excuse me, alternate Commissioner Ross?
I'm here, but I don't have, did my audio, I'm sorry, my video isn't working, it says I have to turn on Zoom.
That's okay, alternate Commissioner Ross, excuse me.
I'm present.
Okay, Commissioner Wright?
Present.
Commissioner Chang?
Present.
I believe Commissioner Brody is still absent, Vice Chair Boyle?
Here.
And Chair Dustin?
Here.
Great, and I'm going to forego the flag salute until we're meeting in a public, common room. I'm gonna just briefly acknowledge that the meeting agenda for this meeting and for all meetings is posted 72 hours prior to the meeting at San Marino City Hall, at the San Marino Public Library, the San Marino Recreation Department, and the City of San Marino website. The general order for business this evening will be as follows. First, on every project that's on the agenda tonight, each commissioner has received plans and staff comments. And each commissioner has reviewed every item on the agenda and has visited each physical site. The general order will be the following. Staff will first discuss the case and provide background information and recommendations. Then then I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then, then we'll ask the applicant questions if we have specific questions. But I'd like to just remind commissioners that that's not an opportunity to sort of engage in comment or discussion on the project. That will come later. The hearing will then be open to the public and I will ask for comments from the public for, against, or about the project. In all cases, if you are providing public comment, I will require you to identify yourself by name, full name, and address. When you're speaking on an item, if other people have spoken prior to you and you have similar comments, please do not repeat those comments, just indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. If you have any additional comments, however, please feel free to provide those. I'm going to, in general, limit public comments to three minutes. And I would ask staff to maybe keep a clock going and let me know when that time has expired. At the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed. And then I will ask for comments from each of the commissioners and we will discuss the merits of the project amongst ourselves. And in each case, variances will be covered first, then conditional use permits, and then finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a continuance or denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved, the commission, by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the City of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes to the commission for consideration. It is also important to understand that there's a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. We will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, we will change that order if there are a large number of people here on a particular item. And that item might be bumped up as a courtesy to those present. We will not start discussion on any new item after 11:00 PM. I don't believe that will be issued tonight, but just so you're aware of that, items not heard will be carried over to adjourned meeting or to the next regular meeting. And then I will also just make a note. I think over time, it's sort of become customary for applicants to ask for a chance to speak again after the public comment period to sort of rebut things that they hear. I am disinclined to allow that because, in my mind, if the applicant has done their job working with the neighbors, they should be aware of objections that will be raised by the neighbors. And you should be prepared to present and address those objections in your presentation and not after the public comment period. So with that, let's start, I'm gonna just ask one final check, did Commissioner Brody get a chance to join us?
Yeah, he's, he's joining the, the, the call just now, he was just missing the link, I just let him in, yeah.
Great, oh, there we go.
Hello, hello. No, no Zoom connection whatsoever.
Ah, I can hear you, so we're good. So let's start with agenda item number one, this is conditional use permit CUP 1909 and design review numbers DRC 1927 HP, DRC 1928, and DRC 1997 at 2275 South Oakno Avenue. Could we start with the staff report, please?
Thank you, good evening commissioners. The item before you has been remanded back before the planning commission to be heard as a new item per the direction of the city council at their October 14th meeting, following a public hearing for an appeal request. Additionally, the applicant was directed by the council to renotice the neighbors within the legal neighborhood to solicit more input regarding this project. Previously, this project was heard at the planning commission meeting on March 25th, 2020, and was approved, approved with a 3-2 vote. Since then, minor design changes have been made to the proposed plans and two more approval requests have been added to this project. One is a conditional use permit for a bathroom attached to an accessory structure and the other is request for front yard fencing gates and pilasters. The applicant, I believe, is present to answer any questions, and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to ask the commissioners if any of you have questions for staff after hearing that report. Okay, I don't see any, then I would ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to, oh, yes, Commissioner Okazaki, please.
Yeah, what was the, what was the protest or appeal at the council, what was the basis of that?
So if you wanted to refer to the city council report, it basically hit on some points that had to do with the historical assessment and the CEQA review of that, and I'm, let me see. I believe that was the, the majority of comments made by the appellant.
And if I may, at the actual city council meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion by the, the surrounding residents with respect to the design of the proposed house in terms of compatibility with the surrounding properties. In fact, some, some of the members, some of the residents had expressed concerns that this proposed project was too close in design to a nearby house that was recently completed, another neoclassical type design, in fact, across the street that was completed, and so that was, that was some of the other conversations that took place at the council meeting via the public.
So, Al, if I understand correctly, then that the, the rationale for the filing of the appeal was potential historical significance to the property. The neighbors' objections that were raised at the city council were having to do with it, the design looking too similar to a house across the street. And the reason that the council sent it back to us was for a noticing issue, is that?
Was, yeah, a couple of things, there was also discussion about the closeness of the house to the street. I know that the, I know at the planning commission, there were discussions as well about, about the setback of the home. And the city council also touched on that as well. But the reason for remanding it back to the planning commission was really, again, the noticing provisions as well as to allow the applicant an opportunity to redesign the project. And more importantly, to circulate the redesign to the neighbors to get them to, to provide an opportunity for them to comment on the new project or the new design.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for staff?
No.
Okay, then I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to please present their proposal.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Adele Chang, I'm with L-C-R-A, the architects for this project. Because of the various questions about the history of the project, I would like to provide a brief rundown with that as well. We initially submitted this project for design review on March of 2019. For various reasons and delays, we ended up going to our first planning commission hearing on January of, in January of 2020. At that time, we heard the commissioners' comments and suggestions and came back to a second planning commission hearing in March of 2020 where we had moved the house back 10 feet from the original location. And so it's further back from the, the main house is actually even further back, but the porch was 10 feet further back than the required setback based on the yard map. We also lowered the overall height of the house, at which time the commission did approve the project. On April, April of 2020, the project was appealed based on generally unsubstantiated concerns about the historic significance of the house. And we were put on the agenda for a September council hearing. It took that long because of COVID and various other reasons. And at that time, we were continued because of incomplete materials from staff, and we finally had our city council hearing on October of 2020, at which time the city council dismissed the appeal. And at that time, the neighbor across the street had gathered up their friends and neighbors in the area and outside of the area and came to object to the project because our front elevation design was too similar to theirs. And it is true, we designed to the neoclassical style, as did they, and the neoclassical style as defined by the design guidelines is, there, there isn't much variation, whenever you see the style, it's done in this way. And when we first submitted two years ago now, we had no idea they were going to design in that style, that we were going to be similar. And it wasn't until, you know, it was built that we realized. So at the city's council suggestion, we went back, we spoke to the neighbors, we redesigned the house, so it is now a colonial revival style instead of neoclassical. And we did, walked around to all the neighbors and met them face to face. Because of COVID again, they were actually, the majority of them were actually home, which is very abnormal for San Marino people, always traveling or busy or whatever. They were home, we were able to speak to the majority of them. And we met multiple times with the main neighbor across the street who had the house that was too similar, and it was met with their satisfaction. And after that, we also sent out certified letters with the change in the elevation design to all of the neighbors, and we received a majority of people who did not object. There was only one objection letter, and I will address the comments that were brought up. So it's been a long road for us. The house design, the plan design, the sides, the rears, the site plan, so forth, did not change from what was previously approved. What really was changed, which is what the neighbors were objecting to, was our front elevation. We changed the style, and I will show you by sharing screen what we did. Am I allowed to share?
Yes, go ahead Adele, I just, I just adjusted the settings.
Okay. So this is our site, 2275 Oakno Avenue. And the west side of Oakno, as you know, consists of lots that are quite sizable, some of them even going up to an acre. And the size of the square footages of the west side of Oakno, very, staff said it's from 3,000 to 6,000, but I know it's actually from 3,000 to 9,000 because 25 years ago, I did a house on 2001 Oakno that was 9,000 square feet. So I remember that, that was my second project in San Marino. So it is an area of larger homes on the west side, and many of these homes have hedges and fences in their front. The character is quite different from the east side of the street. The next slide shows the proposed front elevation in the neoclassical style. Were you able to, are you able to see this? So this is our previously approved elevation here on the right. And on the left is our redesigned front elevation, which has met with the approval of our neighbors. So colonial revival on the left, neoclassical on the right. And in the design guidelines, that happens to be two elevations that are on kind of face-to-face pages, neoclassical to the right, colonial revival to the left. And I read all of these, I even saw that hip dormers were part of it, so we added dormers and columns, classical permanent porch, one or two stories, gable or hip roofs. So we did all of that. And one of the benefits of this change, there are several benefits to this change, which the owners also ended up really liking. One is without large front portico, or article, there's now more light coming into the house from the east. And also, because of the, just the one smaller circular porch, the overall mass of the house as it faces the street is actually a lot less. And I think that is a plus, and it, it can really be seen in the story post and so forth. So again, we follow closely the design guidelines in both instances. And here is the neighbor across the street. And below is ours, not only is our color scheme very, very different, the change in the porch, the addition of dormers, and the fact that we have the symmetrical porch and portico chair on either side, these are all very different. And I think the neighborhood is, is, with one very minor exception, everybody is, is feeling positive about these elevation, the redesign elevation. And in regard to the one objection letter, there was an objection about the roof stating that concrete tiles and, and barrel tiles, clay tiles are more desirable in some way, but we actually are proposing a city pre-approved comp shingle roof. And that, I believe, is, is much more in keeping with the style. Concrete tiles are really much more typical of tract homes. And I believe the house across the street is also a comp shingle roof. And there was some complaint about the symmetry and flat massing of the house, which I believe is really very suitable and consistent with the colonial revival style. The objection letter also mentioned that all the homes on the street are Spanish or mid-century, that is not true. Having walked the neighborhood multiple times at the earlier last year's hearing and the later neighborhood walk, I've been to all the houses, and it is not true that they are all Spanish or mid-century. So that's my rebuttal to the objection letter. And finally, I would like to respectfully ask the commission to kind of take pity on the owner. For them, it's been a very long journey, they've been living with story posts in their front yard, blocking their garage for over a year now. And it's not just that, it's, it's just been a, a long process for them. I respectfully ask you to agree with the neighbors that the new design is appropriate and not at all similar to what they have. And also, if you have any issue with anything, to be able to take that as a condition, condition of approval, so that we have a means of moving forward. As you know, after this, we'll still have working drawings, engineering, building department, and so forth. It's, it's just a very long road for the owner, and so I ask you to take that into consideration. And I'm available for any questions, and I can put the slide up again if you wish.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners who have questions for the applicant at this time?
Well, I, I have a question. The person who appealed this project when the commission had already approved it, that person been talked to, and is that person more or less agreeable to the, the design changes?
Yes, we spoke to them multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
In their front yard, met in the owner's house.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Okazaki, I think you were asking about the appellant, which is different than the neighbors.
That is correct.
The appellant did not appeal the project based on the design. The appellant appealed the project based on a claim of historical significance.
Okay.
There is, there is no design that they would be satisfied with.
It was dismissed by the city council, by the way.
Are there any other commissioners who have questions for the applicant at this time? If not, I have a couple of questions. If I can find my glasses, hang on a second. Is it correct that you will not be installing any visible exterior light fixtures on the house?
Um.
I did not see any.
Yes, that is correct, we will put in recess downlights.
Okay. And then I have some specific questions about sheet L1 of the plans. There are eight different areas that are not clearly marked as to their material, and I just wanted to kind of get clarification. I think I know what it is, but I just want to make sure. So if you look at sheet L1.
Let me share screen again. Sheet L1. It is a landscape plan.
Correct. So the area marked 12, south of the sports court and east of the sports court are labeled artificial turf. There are some additional areas that have that same hash field, but they are not labeled with number 12. So I just want to clarify that these are also artificial turf areas.
Yes.
The area, hold on, let me, I have to look at my sheet where I have it marked. The area just immediately west of the trash enclosure with the stepping stones, is that also artificial turf?
Immediately west, yes.
Okay.
Let me put it this way, the front yard will have true sodded turf, the naturally occurring lawn, whereas behind the main, the front part of the house, it'll become the artificial turf for purposes of saving water and easy maintenance.
So the areas on either side of the spa, that is also artificial turf?
Yes.
And then the area.
Yes.
The area immediately north of the ash tree and the area immediately
Yeah, the ground.
Of the potocarpus, that is also artificial turf?
Yes, yes.
And then alongside, alongside the residence, and in, again, going further towards the street, there's another area on the south side of the residence with stepping stones, that is also artificial turf?
Yes.
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 And then.
However, may I ask you out something? If that is not to your liking, we would gladly take that as a condition of approval to change it to normal lawn, and the staff can police that.
And then the, I see that you also have artificial turf on the far north of the property along the driveway, that's labeled artificial. What about the, the turf in between the stepping stones on the, the sort of patio drive area in front of the house, is that artificial or real?
That should be real.
In between the stones?
Yes.
Who activate your microphone?
I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but I would, I would like to comment.
Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is Randy Tang, my address is 1875 Kenilworth Avenue. And I'm just speaking briefly on behalf of, I'm not an architect, but I have recently gone through a remodel, and I'm a little bit concerned about the difficulty just pertaining with this case of San Marino residents trying to upgrade their homes, whether it's through remodels or rebuilds. I do support this proposal, and then mostly because I feel bad for the owner whose property rights. I mean, I understand there's been a COVID pandemic, but I do feel for the property owner having first been told that his project has been approved and then not approved, and going back and forth about this. I know that the city guidelines are extensive, but as long as the project does follow the city's guidelines and satisfies, you know, whatever rules you guys have, I do feel like, you know, it should be approved and, and, and so that the owner can kind of move on and not have this kind of emotional roller coaster, which I'm sure he or she has been experiencing. So, yeah, as a, as a resident, I'm just coming forward and speaking on behalf of my support for this project on basis of, as a property owner and as a resident of San Marino.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
And Chair, if I may, I did freeze a little bit there during the instructions. But if anyone would like to comment on this project, you could use the raise hand feature that's next to your name on the right-hand side of your screen under the participants' certain viewing point. Or you can, as Randy did, send me a message and I can call your name and you can speak, of course. Or you can raise your hand and I can see you and you can speak that way as well. So I just wanted to provide the instructions for everyone at this time.
Thank you.
Chair, I don't see anyone with a raised hand. I don't have any comments in the chat box. It doesn't appear as if anyone is raising their hand as well in the video.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period. And I'll ask our commission to discuss this amongst ourselves. If we could have the thoughts of Commissioner Wright to begin with.
Okay, well, I'm certainly sympathetic to what the owners have gone through. I've gone through two remodels myself and it's not fun. But for me personally, I was in the minority to begin with way back in March. And for me, nothing has really changed because the basis for my concern and my disapproval, if you will, was the massing. And I still think it's just too big for that street. I didn't mind the other, the other design. I don't mind this design per se. It's just for me, when I look at the staff report and it talks about the size of the lots and the size of the homes and notwithstanding this 9,000 square foot house, which is not in the staff report, I think because it's way down the street and not in this legal neighborhood, this would by far be the largest house on a similar type lot. And I just think it's too big. So it's too massive, it's not compatible, and so I cancel it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle.
Thank you. So during the presentation, I wrote down some notes that were more extensive than what I was going to talk about. So bear with me for just a second. First of all, I want to say, of course, I feel for the owner. And I appreciate the other comment from the resident as opposed to, you know, the time that this has taken. But what I will say is that this is due process. This is how our local government works. And I think that we all respect that. And I think that we would want that for any project that was coming before us. So while I do feel for the owner, you know, this is just, it is, I mean, I hate to say it, but it is just how it works. You know, it's also interesting because we've had a lot of projects that have come before us where we have a majority neighbor input, but it still doesn't, the project still doesn't fully reflect the design review ordinances that we have in place. And unfortunately, this is one of those situations, in my opinion, where regardless of the fact, you know, it's, we definitely want neighbor input. But at the same time, when it really comes down to it, the planning commission is the legislative body that makes these decisions. And we like to weigh in the neighbor input, but they can't be the deciding factor because they are not the experts. We are the subject matter experts as appointed by city council. The other thing that I want to say just very quickly because I believe that I am the commissioner, that the first time it came before us brought up the aspect that there might be historical significance. I have come to the conclusion that I was wrong about that. But what I will say is that I think that it would be something for the city or the city council, whomever it needs to be, so I'm directing this kind of towards you, Aldo, is that I think that it might be wise for us to find a neutral party that can do the historic assessments for our city and not have it be owner found or city found, you know, but, I don't want to say city found, but, you know, find some neutral party, whether it's the Pasadena Historical Society or somebody else that is our go-to historical survey group that the owner would pay for. But so that we're not doing kind of these haphazard, you know, they can pick and choose who they want to kind of, I'm not, I don't want to say that they will slant the report towards what they want their findings to be. I just think that it would be very, I think it would be good for us to find just one company that we recommend to all of the future homeowners when they go through this to go to that we have vetted as a full neutral group. I think that that would make everyone feel a little bit more comfortable as it pertains to residents who are going to put this up for appeal. We, as the planning commission, looking at these, at the reports, know that it is neutral party. And that's all I'm going to say about that. So it's just something that I would, I would hope that we can look into at the very least. So then going on to the findings, and I'm sorry, it's taken me a long time to get this. Similar to Jerry, I was in the minority when this came before us. I denied the project when it was first before us. And I agree, I'm standing with that decision. I think that this property is just, I mean, simply put, it's just too big for the size. Technically, I think it is not compatible with the legal neighborhood when you consider that the dental offices that are on Huntington Drive are all zoned R1 and they are all one-story homes or one-story properties. And so technically, it is not compatible with the legal neighborhood. Additionally, to what Chair Dustin brought up, major issues with the artificial turf, especially in the placement of the parts of the front yard. It seems like it would be a very terrible precedent, especially because we are having a lot of code violations coming before us where people have removed their turf, their natural turf to put in artificial turf. I think that this is a mixed message to have so much near the front area. Plus, as you all know, I think that artificial turf is one of the worst climate crisis contributors that we have. So I disagree with it in backyards as well as front yards. So if it were to be approved, if I were again in the minority in terms of this approval or denial, I would say that it absolutely cannot be approved without a condition of removal of the majority of the artificial turf. And I think those are all my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boyle. Could we hear from Commissioner Brody, please?
Yeah, good evening, folks. This is something that I was not, I was not involved with back in 19 and so forth. And just looking at the history of it all, the delays that were experienced in great part had to do with the appeal, which is something that we don't control. This is not a matter of what used to be a real curse for the Design Review Committee and going back about six, seven years ago, when they continued and continued and continued matters. That's not the situation here. It's very different. My notes are about the same as what we've heard. It's about 1,500 square foot. Too massive, in all frankness. I would have hoped for something around 4,500 square feet on a tad over a half acre that would be appropriate for this area. I drive by it almost daily. I'm very familiar with Oak Knoll. And I think this is, from a massing point of view, it's overcompensating. I'd like to add my voice to on the artificial turf. We shouldn't be allowing artificial turf in this city, period. It is environmentally incompatible. So I could not support this project. And I do sympathize with what someone has to go through in San Marino at times. But, you know, on the upside of all of that, we don't have flippers coming in here. We don't have flip this house coming in here, whipping something out in four months and then turning it over in a very undesirable finished product. So that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Brody. Commissioner Chang.
Yes, I think the home is compatible with the neighborhood. I think the overall massing, it is a larger home, without a doubt. However, given the setbacks and the sighting of the home, you know, there is a 60-foot setback from the curb or from the street property line. There is approximately 25, 27 feet setback to the north and to the south of the home. So the home is not sitting on Oak Knoll and it's not sitting in front of their neighbors. It's sighted in as much center of the property and lot as possible. And I think it's a good design that's been proposed. I think I actually like the new proposed style of the home, architectural style, as opposed to the, I believe it was the neoclassical style that was proposed previously. So I would be able to support the project. I also agree with the natural grass as opposed to artificial turf. That would be a requirement, a condition of approval if I were to see this approved. However, you know, I hear what all the other commissioners are saying and all the comments made. However, I tend to disagree to the extent that the home is sighted properly. It is designed properly. It really, when you look at to what the size and what's adequate and proper, it's going to be to the homeowner's use and then what they feel is most adequate for their purpose and style of living, which I think to an extent is not our point to dictate. However, I note that it is larger than the rest, but it's not obscenely so. So I would be able to support the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki.
I supported this project with a previous design back in March of 2020. And I also believe that this project is totally consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. The two adjacent properties are two stories. And the parcel, the size of the lot is so huge that, and the setbacks are all around, not just the front, but the size, as Commissioner Chang indicated. Setback so far that I believe, even though the, it's almost 6,000 square feet, I think it's totally consistent with the regulation that the city has and it fits very nicely. And it's consistent with the other housing that I see on both sides of Oak Knoll. And I think this project will add value to Oak Knoll as well as be consistent with other projects that are already there recently, as well as the old homes. I don't think 6,000 square feet on this piece of property is too large. I think it's totally consistent. And the owner should be able to build to the design standards that we have and not just a personal preference of the people that are reviewing this project on this commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross.
I had some, I had some comments to make earlier on, but they were pretty nitpicking concerning the pilaster lights and so forth. And I supported this in the earlier March meeting. And I still do. And I think that we really should give this owner the benefit of the doubt and put the conditions on. I don't like the artificial turf. I don't like some other things, but that's not for me to say, really. But I support this in its iteration right now.
Thank you. Well, I have some comments to make on the project as well. I have, I have really, I don't think I've ever gone back and forth so much on a project as I have on this one over time. I was in the majority at the March meeting, but I was an accidental member of the majority because of the confusion of that first attempt at a Zoom meeting. And so my vote didn't really go as I had intended. There's a lot of new construction in this neighborhood. And, you know, clearly the trend for all the newer homes is going to bigger homes. But this home does really push past the already big homes that are in the neighborhood in a very imposing way. I would agree with the consensus on the committee that this house in general is too large. I have to say, I was much more negative about this project until tonight, really, when I saw Ms. Chang's presentation and the side-by-side view of the neoclassical version with the pediment in front versus the colonial revival with the much more diminutive porch, front entry porch. It does significantly lighten up the heaviness of the home. But I think not enough that it isn't, it does, it needs still something taken from it in terms of the height. The plate heights are still really pushing it for the neighborhood. And you see it in the entry door. It's an eight-foot entry door. It's just out of human scale. It looks almost comical to see a door that big. I have, I have still concerns that that rear-facing balcony is a possible privacy concern for the neighboring property to the west. I have doubts that on a project of this size, that no exterior light fixtures are going to be installed, particularly on that balcony. Because when you have that outdoor space, you want to be able to use it at night and you're going to want lights out there. And I think that, you know, once the project is approved by this body, the applicant is free to indulge in any lighting design choices that are not specified in the plans. And I think that's problematic. Commissioner Ross, you mentioned you had some nitpicky comments about the pilaster lights. Well, I think I'm going to make those comments for you. But on sheet L1A, the lights for the plasters are noted to be a maximum of 10-watt LED or 40-watt incandescent. But there's no model number given for the lights. Now, on sheet L3, there is a model number. So I used that model number to look up the manufacturer and I got the manufacturer's specification sheet for those lights. And it says that the maximum wattage for the LED version is 15 and 100 watt for the incandescent. So that's a concern to me that there's that discrepancy. But either way, these are largely unshielded lights with some very light, moderate seeded glass, but otherwise really open. And either of those specifications, whichever is right, you're talking about really, really high levels of lumens. Yes, these are dimmable lights and we could all hope that the homeowner would be judicious and dial down the lights to a low level. But we don't know that. And if these were at their maximum output with that type of unshielded lensing, it's just really excessive amounts of light at street, right at eyeball level for cars driving by, for people walking by, and the neighbors across the street are going to have to stare at it all night long. I also have significant problems with the landscape plan. The types of trees and their placement gives me a concern that the intent is to maintain a very diminutive canopy of trees. And it will never be allowed to fully mature into a large canopy, which is what that house is going to need to help soften the massing of it, even if, even if it is reduced in the plate height and so forth to be more integrated into the neighborhood. Most of the trees that are selected are medium-sized varieties of trees or dwarf varieties of trees. I call them magnolias or dwarf magnolias. The olive trees, which do have the potential to The olive trees, which do have the potential to be quite large, beautiful specimens. They're situated way too close to the house. They will never be allowed, you, you, you will not be able to allow an olive tree to grow to full maturity six to ten feet away from the foundation of a home. It will, it will destroy the house. And the only way to prevent that is to keep it pruned down to like a large bush. And that's not attractive. And that's not what olive trees should be. And also I, I have to say, I, I have a real concern with the extensive use of artificial turf. I also don't think that the, the solid paneling on the fencing and the gates that's proposed in the front is appropriate. It's not compatible with the style of the house and it's not compatible with the character of the neighborhood. So I, I was very, very strongly negative on this project now going into it. But now I would say I'm moderately negative to the project. Depending on what kind of massing changes could be made. But it doesn't sound like there's a lot of support on the committee for moving it along, but I'll, I'll just ask for if there's a motion.
I would move to deny DRC nineteen dash twenty-seven HP, DRC nineteen dash twenty-eight and DRC nineteen dash ninety-seven.
And the conditional use permit as well?
I'm sorry, unconditional use permit number CUP nineteen dash nine.
And I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Then let's move on to agenda item number two. This is, I'm not going to read all the variance numbers. I'm going to just read the address of the property. This is the one at seventeen oh five Sharon Place. If we could have the staff report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. The application is for variance number B twenty dash zero one, B twenty dash zero two, B twenty dash zero three and design review number DRC twenty dash eighty-three HP. This application is coming to the commission as a new single story residence with a detached two car garage. The resulting structure will have nonconforming front and rear yard setback. Also nonconforming street facing garage door setback. And additionally, a, a proposed lock coverage that is over the maximum allow on the property. The reason why this project is coming to the commission in this manner is because this is actually an after the fact request. The city, city staff issued building permit for the property owner to do interior remodel. As it turned out that they discovered substantial mold contamination, which require removal of part of the structure in a manner that they end up removing approximately sixty percent of the structure. And which we are now looking at the structure as a new home. So staff is, has provided a historic assessment report included in your staff report. This home is identified as a historic home because of a former owner and resident at this home being a well-known doctor that had contribute greatly in the prevention of small pot and polio. For that reason, under the California Environmental Quality Act, it is a historic resource. For the substantial removal of this home. The assessment also provided additional discussion as to what the removal has impact the prior structure and what the architect and homeowner has to, have to do in order to bring the structure back to its former appearance. When you look at it from Rose Avenue and from Sharon Place. So for all of the requested variants, they are minor with the exception of the lock coverage issue, which is over two hundred fifty-three square feet. Staff, they provided a lengthy discussion of these variances requests. In summary, staff is able to make the, the finding for the variance request. Because the intended purpose in this case is to bring the structure back to its former appearance. When you look at it from the street, since this is a corner lot. Being that this corner lot location and the special circumstance involved here being that is a historic resource. That this is not a special privilege that we are granting to the property if it is granted. And also additionally, the returning of the structure to its former location would not have any detrimental impact to the neighbors. It, we are bringing the structure back to its location that it has always been since the original construction. And the city do not have any documented complaint or concern from adjacent neighbors about the location of the, of the of the structure. In terms of design review, in this case again, is quite unique. Because the home is, will be reconstructed back to its former height. Going back to the previous material and finish textures. So it will continue to be compatible with the neighborhood. Staff do not have any issue with the design review request. And is supporting this project with additional condition on, within the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Troy. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission? Yes, Vice Chair Boyle.
Um, I am just curious, because this is now considered a new home. Is it gonna, is it gonna have to comply with the rule to have solar panels?
Yes, it does. And solar panel locations are shown on the roof plans and they are not visible from the street.
Okay.
We, I have a question. Do we have the original plans for this home somewhere in the city archives?
The original, as in, what is, in nineteen forty?
Yes. Yeah, the original plans.
No, we don't unfortunately. But based on the information provided in the assessment report and based on city records, it seems that in the early sixty or shortly after destruction and a little bit of extension additions to the home. So it is, it is reasonable, reasonably to believe that majority of the original construction, at least from inside a home is no longer, no longer exists today.
I have a question too.
Yes.
This has to do with lock coverage. You mentioned that it's a corner lot. So it then has the ten percent reduction from an interior lot as far as block cover. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the number for this property goes something like this. Because this property, the last size itself is larger than the minimal, the minimum required last size for this area. Just a ten percent bonus for having a lot that is larger than the minimum required. But because it is a corner lot, they are getting a ten percent reduction.
Wow, that worked out.
Didn't balance out at the end of the day because the ten percent are taken from two different numbers.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Chair, I'm just wanting to note, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. Chair?
Oh, yes, thank you. Any other questions from the commission for staff? No? Okay. Then at that, I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to please present their project proposal and go ahead.
Hello. My name is Feng Xiao. I'm the principal of architectural firm Apex A located twenty-five forty Huntington Drive, suite number two oh seven and San Marino nine one one oh eight. I am the applicant and also architect for the project. So Eva actually has done a very, very thorough report. You know, again, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here to present a project to the commissioner. And thank you, the planning staff, to, at the very beginning, start working with us all the way to this point. This is a little bit different. I, I, I mean, I, I should say unexpected condition at this point. I do have a material board. If you want to share a screen, I can show you. Can I do a share screen? So basically, the intent here is we work with the city and all his torrent very closely at the very beginning of this home. So I'll go actually after all the discussion, the work, we worked with owner decided what we, we propose is to keep the existing street appearance, both street elevation, both side two street elevation will be kept. And we actually, I mean, which means we're actually keep the existing building height, plate height, materials and colors and the massing and everything, just try to keep it as compatible as possible to match the existing neighborhood. And so basically, we actually send, let's say Staco, we send Staco manufacturer there to specify the color and the finish. Send finish to match existing. We kept the existing door. You know, we kept the window still colonial white color. And also six approval list. And then we also work with all his torrent and specify the roof tile is, you know, more close to the, the existing home and also on city's approval list. So the original intent is not changing the street appearance. I mean, now because of the more intensive demolition happened during the construction, we came back as a new home. And we do understand the existing home, it is, we will need variance for existing, for this existing home. But the goal was to keep a regional footprint of the home. So for lock coverage, what we did was we actually removed the, the patio, two patios and the porch next to the, I can actually show you here. There is actually existing patio with some courage with temporary structure, not attached, not exactly attached to the home here. And there's also a small porch on the back here. So basically our regional home and the lock coverage is over a thousand square feet after remove those. So we were able to reduce about over eight hundred square feet. So still have like a little bit over two hundred. But the goal was the existing footprint was there. We tried to keep the existing footprint. So that's how we end up where we are today. You know, I don't have much, and also go back to the, the material boards. We also looked through all the dark side light to try to find something match the existing home. And it is a dark sky light and, you know, even though it's under porch, since our regional home has two Wascons. So we pick a Wascons as a, you know, basically it's a dark sky light and smaller size. And we thought to match the one story home, you know, nicely, you know, if you look at the catalog, this is the, you know, about the smallest light we, we can choose, we think is right for the scale. Other than that, I, I, like I said, I'm not going to add too much. And I don't want to say, oh, he's touring Casey, she's here too. And she probably have few words then to talk and present. And then also the owner Angel and also project manager from builder's team is also here too. If any question you, you need to answer, we all here to answer your question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant's representative? None? Okay. Well, I got a couple, so hang on. Let's see. Can you give a little bit of detail as to what halted construction in mid-August through November?
Um, as Eva put it in the report, I think we finished, oh, let me go through the date actually. Don't remember exact date. Yeah, we're basically leading the process until the building permit approval, which is around August. And then, then the, the builder actually put a permit from that point. I think they, as Eva laid it out here, they threw the process, I think that there is a letter attached, you know, actually our general contractor provided. So during the process, because of the mold and the structure deterioration, they basically end up remove the backside more and then, and also original master bedroom, the bathroom side, those piece actually is all black mold on the back. And their framer and the general contractor, they just had a more extensive, you know, removal. You know, at that point, I guess. And then we were informed by city around the mid-November. And then we're basically went to the site and did a survey, see how many was actually being removed. We measured it and we surveyed it. And then we provided a new additional joint with the pictures on that. And then start this process and then, you know, for to, to reapply.
Thank you. And then my last question. You are preserving the metal roof on the bay window on the south elevation?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I've got one question.
Yes.
Do we have a report from someone who has examined the mold wherein it was indicated that the mold itself was staky botrust or some other like mold fungi that results in the actual timbers being removed?
I cannot answer that question. Maybe our project, there is a letter, I think the general contractor's framer, you know, took picture and referred it to in the letter. And the project manager of general contractor, Joshua, he is here too. I don't think I actually, it's not a, you know, I, I can't answer this question like myself. If you wouldn't mind, we can ask the project manager to answer.
Straightforward question. If the mold itself was analyzed, if there was a decision made, that it has to be removed. And I'm not talking about a contractor or a framer's decision. I'm talking about some biological expert that said, no, you cannot, you cannot remediate this through some substance. It has to be removed.
Well, from my knowledge, I don't believe there is a report or anything done like that.
That's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
All right.
Any, any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Okay. In that case, I will open up the hearing for public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment for or against or about this project, if you could please indicate by one of the methods indicated by Director Sivantes earlier.
And Chair, we have, we do have one raised hand by Jennifer Giles to speak. I see that one right now is the only one is looking for public comment. So Jennifer, if you can unmute yourself, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Jennifer Giles. I live at twenty-two ninety Lorraine Road in San Marino. I'm here to speak about the deplorable condition of this project. It pains me to see what has happened to a historic building and the fact that there was no oversight, lack of oversight by our city staff and code compliance. And it took a neighbor to document extensively what they saw happening and how they were, their concerns were somewhat brushed aside, not only by the homeowner, but also just told by the city, oh, it's all interior work. It's fine, it's fine. And then the roof actually was documented by that neighbor that the roof came off in August. And I, I, I agree with Mr. Brody that there should have been a report that provided some sort of documentation as to how that mold, if it was existing or if it was caused by the fact that the roof came off the house and elements were left exposed. And it was quite convenient that it was just quickly removed. I feel that, that this is, that this project is asking for forgiveness. I feel that, that this is, that this project is asking for forgiveness after the fact. And this group, the planning commission, should send a very strong message to our community that this should not occur again. And that there should be an extremely hefty penalty provided. And there's nothing that can really bring back the character of this house as much as it's stated by the architect that that's their intent. The penalty should send a message that we do not want this to happen again. This is, it's an atrocity. Looking at the photographs, it pains me as an architect to see it happen to another house in our community. If it's a new home, it should comply with all current codes. There should be no variances, just because, oh, this wall needs to come down. I'd like to put it back in the same place. No, it should follow the new code because it's considered a new house. You have removed all of the existing structure but two walls. It is atrocious, and I hope that you deny this request or at least levy extreme penalties on the homeowners as well as the contractors for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak?
I do not see any with raised hands, Chair.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and we'll move on to member, Commissioner deliberation and discussion. Commissioner Wright.
Picking on me tonight.
I know variances are your thing, so.
No, no. This is a tough one because I feel sort of boxed in a little bit, notwithstanding this Giles impassioned plea. This, this did have a historic assessment and the historic assessment has told us to do certain things or what it thinks would be appropriate. That has given me some pause. I also understand from the report, and we really did not get into this, but that the applicant has already been punished through our system, through our code enforcement. I don't know that there is a process for this commission to impose fines, certainly not before us, that would go through the compliance people. That's my understanding, and I believe it already has. So as far as this, the variances and design review, I, I too was shocked by the pictures, I was shocked by the site, my site visit, wondering how it occurred. But again, that's not what's before us. What's before us are the variances and the design review. Just as an aside, I've spent a lot of time on the outside of this house, not inside, but on the outside because I carpooled with my then kindergarten in the early 1990s with somebody who lived at this house, and it was a Dr. Worley, but it was the son. And I don't believe the father was living there at that time. So I am a little bit confused about the, the report. I'm also very much surprised that not, I'm not saying it wasn't a huge contribution that he made, but that was not ever my understanding of what would lead to a home being historic. It's not a place where I think we would drive by, it's not like George Washington's homes, not like Anne Frank's home. So the basis for maintaining this home, to say, was a little bit surprising to me. But having said that, I'm all for, for keeping homes that we believe are historic. So having said all that, I feel like I can pull up my nose and, and support this based on the historic assessment. I'm not so concerned with the the variances, there's six inches, eight inches, three inches. I bet if we, if we went out and measured a lot of people's homes, they would be six inches, three inches, four inches off. That's my guess as far as setbacks go. I'm much more concerned about the lot coverage. And I was ready to recommend denial of that until, again, I read the recommendation of the historic assessment that it would be better to allow that excess lot coverage because because otherwise it would, it would not, it would interfere with the historic aspect of it. So those are kind of my rambling thoughts and ready to listen to other people as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody.
Yeah, when you take down 60% of a home of a residence that is supposedly historic, what do you have left? 40% of the historic structure. And unless you're willing to go back to the original plans and reconstruct it and bring it back to its acceptable historic nature, what are you doing? And I'm kind of betwixt and between on this one. On one hand, if the variances were necessary, and I believe they are, to bring it back to its original state, I think I could approve it. On the other hand, we're modifying and changing, and we're not bringing it back to its historic state at all. And 60% of it is gone. So I, I think this is somewhat of a, I hate to use this term, but I will, this is a disingenuous application. When we're calling something historic and we're only dealing with 40% of it, what are we really dealing with when the intent is not to bring it back to its original state? I think I'd be more moved if they said there was a search for, an archival search for the original plans. They couldn't find it, they went through all kinds of processes to go through that and they couldn't find it. I'd probably be more sympathetic, but there has been nothing. And then the decision to bring it down to 40% of its existing state was because someone of an unknown ability or expertise decided that because there was mold, it had to be taken down to that level. That is wholly inconsistent with what I've experienced in dealing with mold, especially the most deadly type, stocky botrus. So I'm kind of somewhat on the fence, more negative than positive on this.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle.
Well, the first thing that I have to say is as a student of biochemistry and virology of the group, I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Wright with regards to the historical significance of the resident being on par with our founding father, but I'm very biased. I'm not going to add much clarity, I think that this project is a mess. And I think I would almost go so far as I think that the homeowner didn't get away with what they wanted to get away with. And we are now having to backtrack and we will never get the level of historical significance that this house was. And I don't think that the penalty is probably enough. I don't know if the blame needs to lie with our city staff in terms of not being on top of it with regards to oversight. I don't know if this was just a subversive action by the homeowner and the, not necessarily the architect, but the, you know, the, the general contractor. I think that this is, I don't, I don't know what to do because obviously it seems as though we have to agree with these variances to get it back to its historic condition. But at the same time, there's no way, you're, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Brody. Like when you have a shell of a house, there's no historical significance anyway. And so it, yeah, this, this whole thing is just a mess. And I, and again, I'm sorry that I'm not bringing clarity to this. I just, I'm so disappointed that it's gotten this far, whether the fault being in the lack of oversight or a malevolent decision by the homeowner and the general contractor. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't really have much to say, except I think that this is just such a disappointment that it's gone this far. And I, and I'm really looking to the other commissioners to, to get input on what to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross, Emily Klops. You gotta unmute yourself, Monty. Not yet, you're still.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, I, I was in complete agreement with Commissioner Brody and his assessment of this, and Commissioner Boyle made it very plain that this is a mess. But what are we going to do about it as a planning commission? I think we should applaud, if nothing more, the enforcement of our code violations by the city, but maybe they didn't do enough. And what are we as a planning commission gonna do about that? I don't think there is much, but we can at least perhaps look at this, this proposal or, or item as a good example of what not to do and just turn it down. Now, that's a little harsh, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's comment. Everybody was very, actually very thoughtful, although all of you thought that you didn't add any clarity, I think it added clarity for me. I think, I don't want to blame the staff, but we have to be more diligent about projects on a historical property. I think we have to watch it a little bit more carefully. You know, but the, I don't want to add anymore to that, except in conclusion, I think, I, I think we just, I think we need to approve this project as currently presented. I think everybody made mistakes here, but I think we just gotta move on and kind of don't cry over spill milk. Let's just let the project be completed to the best it can be to, to have the property as close as possible to, to, to the original. Even though it might only be 40% historic, let's get it back in shape rather than leave that project the way it is. You know, let's help out the neighborhood, let's just finish this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so it sounds like everybody sort of feels like I do, that this is a mess and it doesn't look like there's an easy way out. I, I have a few, I'll just pretend like none of this violation stuff happened, and I'm just gonna look at it from a design review perspective and as if it were an encumbered project. I, I do believe I could make the findings that are necessary for the variances because of the historic assessment report. So I think those could be something I, I'm comfortable finding. I have a few concerns with the design review, but not a lot. I would agree with the staff findings and recommendations regarding the garage doors and the decorative stucco vent. Also, there's a description of replacing the front walkway. There's no detailed description of what that walkway would look like. But at one point, and I am somewhat familiar with this house, at one point, this house had a very peculiarly dimensioned front walk in very sort of brightly contrasting concrete colors. And I would not like to see that brought back because it did not look good with the house back then when it existed. And I don't think it would look good with it back. I would like to see something more appropriate. Now, sort of talking about the problems with this house a little bit, given that the neighbors' concerns about this project seem largely to be concerned with the neglected landscaping and the neglected trees, I would have to see a landscape plan in order to approve this project at all. And that plan would have to include specifically appropriate hedging along the parking pad that's located adjacent to Rose Avenue. If you look at the, the south elevation of that project, there's, you know, just to the east of the garage, there's that, like a wood picket sliding gate, and there's a parking pad in front of that. There used to be a hedge that was planted there that blocked that fairly industrial view of that pad of concrete and that, that gate that accesses the rear property. And I think that would go a long way to improving the aesthetics for people in the neighborhood who have to look at that elevation over and over and over again. You know, I know there's a lot of sense of outrage over this demolition being done. And there's a sense that, you know, maybe the applicant was trying to get away with something. I think Commissioner Wright is correct. That is not the purview of this body, as much as you may want to see punishment rendered. That has already been done through the, the ordinance compliance and control people. That's not something that we can make part of our deliberations. I agree with, I think Commissioner Brony and several other people have mentioned that, you know, you're down to 40% of what's left with this house. We're basically reconstructing the facades on two elevations and then everything inside of that is gonna be reconfigured and different. And if Dr. Worley were brought back and walked in the front door, he would walk up to the front door saying, oh, my house is still here. He'd open the front door and look inside and go, it's gone. So you could look at this a couple of ways. We could get a really nice, attractive ranch-style home. And the applicant is gonna sort of get away with a little more lot coverage than they might otherwise normally get on a project on this lot. But the neighbors would be spared a long period of staring at an unsightly construction site and then enduring a long, lengthy construction process if we made them scrape it clean and come back with a new project that fit all the setbacks and other lot coverage requirements. If you, if you let them build this sort of recreation and give them the variances, there's nothing to prevent a homeowner that owns this property in two years, five years, or whatever, coming back and saying, I want to tear it down and build something new. It's not historical because there is no integrity left because you basically gutted it and you've left two out exterior facades. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards being sympathetic with the neighborhood and at least returning to the community a charming style ranch house and having to sort of eat it that I'm, I'm not happy that this beautiful charming ranch home that was at one time historic has been, you know, brutalized as badly as it has been.
I have a couple of thoughts here that kind of conveys what we're all saying. You know, if this had come before us with an architectural historian who restored the home or had a plan for restoring the home as it existed when the good doctor was there. And we had a decent rationale for why 60% was removed. And we had a landscaping plan, which I think is desperately needed. If we had all those three things, I think that we would feel a lot more comfortable in moving forward and granting the, the three variances and the DR. I think that we would feel a lot more comfortable in moving forward and granting the, the three variances and the, the DRC design review plan. But there's a certain uncertainty that we all have. So my thought is this. And of course, it depends upon whether the applicant is agreeable. Whether we can see a, in a continued hearing, an architectural historian who attempted to restore or review the restoration as it existed way back when. And that means searching for the original plans. Number two would be a detailed rationale for why sixty percent of the home was destroyed. And if it just turns out that some general contractor said, you know, we got some mold, just rip it out. If, be honest with us. Tell us what the rationale was. If it was some, you know, fly-by-night guy who wanted to be a biologist and this was his attempt at it, let us know that. And lastly, we need a very detailed landscaping plan. If we continued with those elements being addressed, I think we'd all feel a lot more comfortable in dealing with this. And that's, although I'm one of those who is not a big fan of continuances, I think I could tolerate a continuance if the applicant is amenable to those three conditions on continuance. And I don't know if the applicant is or not.
May I?
Yes, please.
Good conversation as well. I, I, well, I actually wanted to add on to our discussion with something else, which I will say, but I would not be opposed to Commissioner Brody's suggestions in terms of doing a continuance. I did not mention in my first comment that I would like to have a landscape plan, especially because that is something very particular that the residents brought up in terms of their complaints to the city. And I think that it would be great to see a due diligence with regards to looking at any kind of historic documentation that we have to bring the house back to as original as possible. It might not be done, but at least, you know, let's see. But the other thing that I wanted to bring up, which was more I don't, I don't, the word that's coming up is technical and this is kind of directed towards Director Cervantes. So in my very quick research that I've done right now, I have learned that the the penalty that the owner paid was a mere fifteen hundred dollars. And what I would like to propose moving forward is that we explore the option of when somebody does a violation of this sort to a historic property, that we actually have a tiered penalty, that a historic property has a little bit more of a penalty than fifteen hundred dollars. When they're probably spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for this remodel, I think fifteen hundred dollars is a little bit of a pittance. And it is changing the landscape of our city. The other thing that I would like to suggest moving forward is that it's not just the homeowner that gets penalized, but it is also noted that the general contractor or whomever moved forward with the work is somehow notified, put on warning, something that their permit will be taken away from, you know, from being able to work in the city or that they have a equal penalty put onto them. It's not so, you know, the homeowner, this may be their one home that they're building and they don't really care that they had a fine, but the builder, whomever approved the, you know, the additional work to get done, whether it was tearing stuff down because of mold, that they get penalized as well because there needs to be retribution that those actors are gonna understand that if they want to work in the city and they want to be valid in our city, that they have to follow our rules despite, you know, and they have to be kind of the, I keep saying it, but the subject matter expert, that if an owner says, oh, I want to do this, that the contractor says, well, you can't, we have to go to the city. And that they have some, like some, you know, reason to do that because they understand that they will be penalized if they do not comply with our rules. So that's just something that I would really like us to explore. That it's, you know, that we do have, again, that we have a tiered system as it pertains to doing a violation on a historic home and that we also have some sort of penalty that the architect, the builder, the, whomever the other players are in this are also held accountable so that they understand that this is not something that they can get away with. And so that's just something I really wanted to say. And it doesn't necessarily need a comment from you, Director Cervantes, just to know that I think that this, moving forward, if we see these kind of things, it's something that I, for one, as a commissioner, I'm gonna be really pushing for.
That actually did raise a question for me, you know, at the beginning of every meeting, I read the little paragraph about you know, once projects are approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents, et cetera, et cetera. There's a risk of paying a fine equal to the five percent, the greater of five percent of the project valuation or twenty-five hundred dollars. Does that also apply to projects that are like entirely over the counter, like an interior demolition and remodel and window change out? Or is there some, some other set of criteria?
No, there's, there's other criteria related to building a, a project without permits or contrary to approved plans. If the building code mandate that essentially requires that failure to obtain a permit will result in obviously needing to obtain the permit and the penalty is one hundred percent the fee charged for the permit. So if your permit that you failed to obtain originally is a thousand dollars, then the penalty would be essentially a thousand dollars in addition to paying the original thousand for getting the permit.
I see. Okay. Well, so we have a suggested avenue of proceeding from Commissioner Brody. Vice Chair Boyle has indicated a willingness to go along with that. Is there any other consensus that that might be a viable?
I'm agreeable to that as well.
All right. So.
But is the, is the applicant agreeable to that?
Well, the question I have for you, Commissioner Brody, is what, I, 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 like you, I'm hesitant to go down the road of continuance unless I see some light at the end of the tunnel.
Right.
And I don't want to, I guess I want to try and figure out a way to make sure that we can, we can move ahead with a decision the next time this comes to us. I, I'm not sure I'm clear on what your expectation of the
Let me just.
research that you want.
Let me lay it out very clearly.
Okay.
Item number one, we'll, we'll agree to a continuance or I'll propose a continuance, put it that way.
Yes.
On three conditions. On the first condition is that a bona fide attempt be made to locate the original plans for this structure and that the retention of an architect, architectural historian be employed for that purpose. And if no such plans are found, then the architectural historian in looking at the original structure and like structures will lend their opinion as to the drawing and perhaps make some modifications.
In terms of main, of preserving architectural integrity, is that what you're getting at?
According to the original condition, the design condition of the property as it existed when the good doctor lived there. Item number two, I want some clarity and some honesty on the rationale for destroying sixty percent of the property. And, and that would mean declarations under oath by people who participated in that. People who could testify as to what kind of a mold was found, whether it was tested, whether it was not tested. I'm looking for integrity and honesty on that point. And number three, that we have a detailed landscaping plan to ameliorate the concerns of neighbors as well as the fact that this is a corner lot and it gets more exposure. And accordingly, I think it's essential that landscaping be done in a, in a very delicate manner that takes those factors into consideration. So if the applicant is amenable to going ahead with those conditions on a continuance, I would move for a continuance.
Question? Question, Chair? I definitely support the landscaping plan. In fact, I had that as one of my notes and failed to, to say anything. And the historian, I think, would be useful to our, to us making a decision. But I'm a little unclear what the information on the mold and how, how, not that I don't agree that I'd be interested intellectually in, in that, what, how that will impact our decision.
My thought in, in that is I would like to know what kind of decision-making went into destroying sixty percent of the property. Of course, that will render a good faith analysis of the applicant's proposal that we have before us. Whether this was done, it could have been done by mistake, could have been done because some, some knowledgeable person voiced that we have a particular kind of mold that's very dangerous. It is an important factor in analyzing the good faith aspect of this application.
So Commissioner Brody, can I just ask for a clarification then? If I understand you correctly, if their rationale was faulty or malicious in some way, that wouldn't necessarily be held against the applicant if they were upfront about what happened?
Well, once, there's a world of difference between faulty and malicious. If they were malicious about it, so to speak, or if they figured, we, we need to tear down this thing and start all over and they use this faux mold concept to do it, I, I'd have a problem in, in looking at their application as being one in good faith. On the other hand, if we're talking about someone who made a mistake, you know, the, we all make mistakes in our life. But these are factors that I think we have to consider. This is a teardown essentially of this historic structure.
Right.
So I guess my problem is if we find it was malicious, but we still have this historian and everybody involving the historical aspect saying, we, we still can and should restore it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little.
Hey, I understand that that decision-making will come up next time around, but I'd like to have the facts before me, before making such a decision.
Okay. I guess, sorry, the one question I have, first of all, the one thing I want to say is assuming that they can find a historic architect to do all of this, I would imagine their rights to the streamline. I, I can't imagine it can be done in a couple of months. Like, they would need to have a, a long-term continuance, my guess, to do the proper research. But then also what it really comes down to is this is, I guess this is what I don't understand and I apologize if this seems really naive, but I understand what would happen if we approved the variances. I don't understand what would happen if we denied them. Like, what, like, do they, if we deny this, going back to the historic home, what would be the next step? Like, what is then on the table? Because even if they came back to us and said, oh, we couldn't figure all of this out, you still have the variances in this current design before you, we're still gonna have to deal with approving it or denying it. So I guess I need to understand what what happens if we deny this. And I mean that real, like, they just get.
No, I, no, I agree with you. I think we have two options. I think if we deny it, it, it goes back and it, it has to comply with all of the current rules. It is a new home, subject to all the new rules. If we, if we approve it, then it makes a what, sixty percent effort? No, I'm sorry, forty percent effort of, you know, of being historic. So.
Yeah, that's, that's the purpose of, of the conditions that I'm proposing. So we could arguably have a shot at bringing it back.
No.
A point. I don't know that I want a long continuance for that neighborhood.
Yeah. So this is the thing that I'm gonna say, I, based on the fact that I, right now, where I'm leaning, I'm gonna let you guys know, is denying this and making this come back as a new home. I think that at this point, the, the thought of it being able to come back to its historical significance is moot. It's not gonna happen. And Chair Dustin is correct, like, there's, I think it was you who brought it up, Chair Dustin, that there's nothing that in two years, the person could put in an application to tear the whole house down and can justify the fact that it doesn't have historical value because it was, you know, they built on top of the shell. So it seems like the better win for our community, and I could be wrong, I'm talking out loud, but it seems like the better win for our community right now is to make this go back as a new home and comply with all of the ordinances. And, you know, maybe come back before us, right, with.
Director Cervantes, you were gonna comment on something, I think?
Is that what happens? Would it come back before us as a new home?
Yeah, I, at that point, I totally forgot what I was gonna mention, but I, I think I was gonna come, I was gonna agree with, with Commissioner Wright in her assessment as to what happens if we deny this. You're, you're absolutely correct. This is, you could very well see, as Shelley was mentioning, a brand-new house because you wouldn't be allowed to salvage the walls that are there because of the lack of building code standards. I mean, we have no idea what's, what kind of foundation is under these existing walls. Whether they can even meet Title 24 requirements. Now, I'm going into a lot of technical building code requirements, but we don't know what this owner will be facing with respect to deeming this a brand-new structure because I think building codes are just going to, not only the respect to, to setback requirements, but building codes are probably gonna do a number on, on what's existing. And so you could be facing, as discussed, a, a, essentially a brand-new structure that, that must meet two thousand nineteen California building code standards.
I'm concerned about lady who lives next door to this property and is gonna have to look at that for god knows how long. I know it leaves a bad taste in our mouth, no matter which way we go on this. I just think, subjecting those neighbors to a prolonged empty construction pit is, is not in the best interest of the community.
Prolonged pit as well.
And what I do.
Well, I'm sorry, Director.
No, I just, I do want to say one thing, just to clarify on the historic piece of this. Yes, there is a historic assessment that was done that did declare the property eligible for historic significance. The property is not historic. It's not a historic landmark. You need owner's consent to declare a property historic landmark. This kind of dives into our next topic on the agenda. Without owner's consent, you can't really pursue into our codes, and I want to be very specific here. Pursuing to our codes, there's a process for deeming a property a historic landmark. And that requires an application of the homeowner to go through various steps to make that happen. That being said, though, we do have a historic assessment that did find a great deal of value in this home with respect to the, the once property owner of this site. And what that does for us, it, it triggers what we call the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Because under the CEQA requirements, when you have a potentially historic home, we are to evaluate whether the project is a, is gonna result in the loss of integrity. And so for this one specifically, I can, I can easily tell you that because sixty percent of the house is now gone. You can easily make the argument that under a potential historic resource in the eyes of CEQA, you've lost all integrity. And so I, I think that at this point, and I don't envy the planning commission here because now we're looking at really, you know, at this point, one or two paths here. Are we looking to just start from scratch? Or are we hoping to at least revive some of whatever's left over and possibly bring back some of that value some way, somehow? And I think that gets to some of what Commissioner Brody's getting at with some of the details that, that he's requesting. I, I think that's, that's, those are valid details that certainly I would like to see, as well as the planning commission should ask for to help with this. So really, those are the two paths. I know you're having that discussion now. But I do want to make it very clear that this is not a historic. But I do want to make it very clear that this is not a historic landmark. But in the eyes of California law, it is a potentially historic landmark, which there are various steps we take to evaluate a project.
You know, maybe it's a good idea at this point to ask the applicant if they're willing to come back at a future date with those three elements addressed thoroughly. And if the answer is no, you know, we know that there's two options now. It's to grant or deny. So let's see what the applicant has.
I would agree with that.
So where's the applicant?
I think our, I mean, I'm only speaker for the architect, as the architect, I think provide landscape plan is totally reasonable. We definitely gonna, you know, I mean, I would say yes, definitely. And then all historian, our architect historian is here. She actually was originally planned to say something anyway. I'll let her to, and the owner is here too. I think, you know, I would, you know, I would say yes, but I will, I will want them to say something, because I'm, I'm just architect for that. Is that okay?
Yeah, just... Yeah. Okay, are they, where are they?
Casey, can you unmute it and talk?
Yes. My name's Casey Tibbet. I'm with LSA Associates. I'm the architectural historian for the property. And I completely agree, this is a really unfortunate circumstance, and it's a very challenging situation. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Boyle for understanding the significance of Dr. Worley and appreciating that. I know it's, it's a hard thing to understand sometimes, you know, a house being significant for a person who lived there, who was historically important. And one of the points I'd like to make is that because the house is not significant for its architecture, there is more flexibility with what you can do in terms of changes to it. In the case of Dr. Worley, he did a lot of work out of this house. And the offices that he worked out of at different universities and different places are not uniquely his own. So there's not another place that we found that really represents him and his work. So the home was a good choice for a way of preserving that significance and his importance. The, another point I want to make is that Dr. Worley moved into the house in 1961. Changes had already been made to the house between 1948 and the time he moved in. And so the goal is not to take this house back to the 1940s, when it was originally built, because that's not representative of the house that Dr. Worley lived in. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to preserve, like, the bay window on the Rose side, because it was something that Dr. Worley actually added himself. So I think, I mean, it's, it's always good to know the full history of the house. We did research all the building permits. The city has indicated they don't have original plans. But in this case, the original plans were not critical, because Dr. Worley was not the original owner of the house. So my feeling is it's a terrible loss. Yes, it's, you know, only 40% left. As a preservation professional, I'm generally not going to recommend demolition of something that still has some potential to convey that significance. So my preference is to rebuild it, reconstruct it, you know, as accurately as we can. And I don't know if this is a possibility, and I'm, you know, sort of speaking for the owner here, but if you are really concerned about somebody coming in later and saying, hey, you rebuilt this thing, it's mostly, you know, new construction, it shouldn't be significant, there may be a process where you could ask the owner to go through the designation process. So it is a designated landmark, and that history is known and celebrated and preserved. And I don't know if the city has a placking program, but, you know, potentially you could have some kind of historical plaque on the property so that people are aware of the significance. And I think hopefully that addresses some of the things that were brought up.
Yeah, appreciate it very much. That made up my mind for me. Your comment that you're not taking the house back to its original, and that it's a terrible loss nevertheless. And that's kind of sums it up. So I'm gonna make the following motion, to deny variance number 20-01, 20-02, 20-03, and DRC 20-83HP. And it looks like you're correct, Casey. It is a terrible loss, and that's where we stand. But we're not gonna go through this process of granting variances on a 40% what's left of a structure that was historic.
Do we have a second?
Come on, Shelley.
I don't know.
Can I make a comment?
Actually, I would like to ask Director Cervantes, since Commissioner Chang has recused himself on this project, do we know which of our two alternates would be up to vote in this project?
Yeah, alternate member Ross is up for...
Thank you.
Is that the way we do it? I thought, I thought as long as we had a quorum still.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. It's up to the chair. If you want to bring in to fill the spot, you can certainly bring someone in to fill the spot. But you do have a quorum with Kevin excusing himself.
All right, well then we'll just leave it with the standing members of the committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Well, this is a hard one, but I'm going to say, I mean, you've convinced me, I'm gonna say yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
It came to me too soon.
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
I will vote no.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. That was a difficult but productive discussion. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Request for Local Historical Landmark Designation, 1779 Lombardi Road. And maybe we'll all be a little bit refreshed by something going through the historic preservation process the correct way. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. And first of all, of course, we want to applaud the property owner, Chris DeWitt, and being the first applicant to take advantage of our historic designation process. He's been very patient with this process. It's our first application, and we're trying to do the right way to ensure we have enough information for the planning commission and eventually the City Council to make the right decision. And so this, this request of the property owner is consistent to our codes, is consistent to our general plan in terms of the ability of a property owner to designate their own property. There's, there is a historic assessment that was provided by Historic Resources Group that identified a variety of different justifications for this property being declared a historic landmark. Moreover, our citywide historic survey completed last year also identified the property having eligibility for national resource or national recognition, as well as California recognition, as well as, of course, meeting our very own local criteria for historic designation. And so that being said, the next steps involved with going through a formal process is the planning commission adopting a resolution of findings declaring the property a historic landmark. That, that resolution will return to you upon receiving direction tonight of the planning commission, next month for final determination before heading to the City Council for the very last action to formally make this home a historic landmark. Moreover, the applicant has also requested a contract with the city for the Mills Act program. And so the council will be looking at entering into a resolution and contract for the next 10 years with the property owner for the Mills Act, which essentially sets annual progress reports for modifications of the home for upkeep, of course, if need be, of course, and it's up to the owner on that. So that being said, staff is requesting that the planning commission open up this hearing, discuss this request for designation, and provide the city staff with findings for approving this, this, this request. And at this point, that is the recommendation. I'll finish off by saying that staff does recommend the planning commission designate the property a historic landmark, and so make that final. And so, as I mentioned, staff is requesting some assistance with planning commission on the findings, and that concludes my presentation.
Great. Do any of the commissioners have questions for city staff at this time?
I do.
Yes, please.
I'd like to know what the cost of a 10-year contract with the city for a historic designation is gonna cost us.
There is no processing fee for the applicant to go down this, this process or this path. It's absolutely free. There's no charge. With respect to the Mills Act, the Mills Act intends to provide any property owner who applies for the Mills Act, and of course is approved by City Council, to enter into a contract that does last 10 years. Now, the goal here is that when we enter into a contract with a property owner through Mills Act, the property is reassessed in terms of property taxes. And the reassessment essentially drops the, the property tax obligation of the property owner roughly about 40 to 60% lower. And so that, that in itself is, is, is the fiscal impact to the city, is the loss of, of that property tax. But the goal of the contract is to essentially take the savings of, of, of the property tax and essentially revert it back towards the property into the, into the home. So essentially, you're taking the savings and putting those savings back into the house for renovations, upkeep, preservation, that kind of thing.
It sounds to me like that's more of a bureaucratic way of saying, let's give the property owner a tax break.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not a tax break. It's actually been, it's an advert, it advertises an incentive, and I believe it is an incentive to allow properties and property owners who do have historic properties the ability to preserve and to upkeep them. Yeah, it's not, it's not a tax break. I don't see it that way.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's good.
We have a question?
I have a question too.
Yeah.
I, I don't remember, you mentioned in this before, when we, when the city identified the historical landmark designations, how many homes were there and what was a potential loss in income for the whole city if everybody went to, went through City Council and got that designation?
What, that's not...
Yeah, it's not now, the, the planning commission, yes, you're right, Commissioner Brody. The Mills Act program is not under the purview of the planning commission. And to speculate the fiscal impact on everyone applying for Mills Act, I, I'm not gonna go there, because...
How many, how many units were identified by the inventory? I just don't remember, so...
Yeah, and remember, that, that's an inventory. It's not, it's not a, a formal adoption that every single home on that list becomes a historic resource.
I agree. I just asked, just tell me how many houses were identified. That's what I'm asking.
I, I didn't do the, the count. I will say there's a significant amount of properties identified under that list. I don't know the actual number. Those properties on that inventory don't qualify for Mills Act unless they go down the process as this property owner is doing.
I understand that. I just asked for the number, but I could look it up somehow?
Yeah, it's on the website.
It's on the website, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners who have questions for city staff? Okay, then let's move along and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to present their project.
I don't really have much to say. I think Aldo set the process up. We started working on this several years ago. I think we're involved, you know, discussions and actually having this survey done for San Marino. I've owned historic homes in Philadelphia before I moved to California, and then before I moved back to San Marino in Glendale. I love them. It's something I really enjoy working on and fixing up and bringing back the integrity of a house. Our current house was in pretty bad shape when we took it over. And it's a labor of love. It's something that does take a lot of time and investment, and something we've enjoyed doing. There's one thing that San Marino has been historically behind its neighbors on protecting. And I know that it's something that, you know, Aldo and I've talked about. We worked with the city on getting the Mills Act process approved, as well as extensive work to go through. This house is the first George Washington Smith House in the LA area. And it's a lovely piece of San Marino history, and we look forward to maintaining it for a long time.
Mr. DeWitt, I had a, well, I'm gonna just sort of jump into Commissioner questions. I'll let, I'll let the other commissioners ask their questions first. Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
Go ahead.
I was just curious if you or if your architectural historian was available, if you could comment on, you know, I really enjoyed reading the report. It was very well detailed. It looked, I saw two features of the home that didn't look particularly original. One is the, the more important one is the, the colonnade arches in the side rear yard. It looks like those were boxed in and had some decorative exterior molding put on at some point. Was there any mention about how that affects the integrity of the structure? And if that could at some point be restored to the original columns?
They're actually original. We have the original plans, and that decorative detail was part of the original plan of the house.
Seemed that way.
But in the, in the photographs, in the earlier photographs of that, that colonnade, those are columns, rounded columns?
The plans we have, they're original to the house, have that included, and I haven't seen any photos where that's not included.
Huh. Well, maybe I'm just...
The garden design, including the walkways, the fountains, the wall systems were all original. Part of the house was expanded by him, and the two years after it's done, which there's also permits for, which was the original garage, and that's been turned into a family room. There was a swimming pool added in the 1960s behind that part of the house, which is, is also walled, which is there. But the colonnade, from everything I've seen, was, was original. We do have plans showing it.
Well, I'm gonna let other people ask questions if they have. I'm gonna see if I can find the photograph.
I could be missing something.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, I don't know if there's a way for you to share this, Aldo, but on page 1A, or I'm sorry, page 150 of the agenda packet, there's a, there's a circa 1925 Architectural Digest photograph of an interior corner of the home. And then up above on page... Where is it? On page 139 of the project, it looks like the same interior courtyard shot, but in one picture, the old one, there are round columns, and in the other, in the, in the color new picture, there are squared columns with that molding that I'm talking about. Maybe they're just not the same corner of the house, but it looked like it to me. I don't know how I can show this. Let me see here.
That's what I like about due diligence.
The importance of this... The importance of this.
Okay, I think I figured out a way to do this. If you give me a minute, I'm going to cut and paste both the pictures into a document here, and I'm going to see if I can show them both at the same time. Maybe I'm just not getting, it was very difficult to get a sense of the layout of the house from just the photographs.
Just don't get burned.
It's pretty confusing. When we first came in, it takes a while to get a feel for it, because there's all these little outdoor rooms.
Okay, Aldo, is it possible for me to share my screen real quick?
It is, yeah. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm going to put this up and, oh, here we go. I'm going to share that. Okay, so these are the two pictures. Is this not the same corner?
That is the same corner.
So if you see these columns here, they're rounded on these arches, and here they've been squared off with that molding on. So I mean, clearly, that to me is a change. I was just curious if you'd done any research as to whether those original columns could be uncovered and restored, or were they completely removed and replaced because of structural issues or?
They're, they're, feels solid now. I mean, that I hadn't noticed that before. There's not anything in there that is, it's not like a structure. It feels like it's like a solid concrete.
I see.
Thing. So I'm not sure. I guess we could, we could look at that, but I've never, that's a pretty good eye for detail. I, I have to say, after sitting through this meeting, as much as I like houses, I thank God I'm not doing what you guys do. This is just, really does not sound like a very rewarding or, hopefully, there's some fun perks you get, because my Lord.
Well, to do this job, you have to love houses and be a masochist, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, that was just my question.
Same corner?
It is the same corner.
It is. It's gotta be, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same corner.
Actually, the color rendering to the right is, in my humble opinion, a big improvement. What I'm seeing in the black.
Breaker for me in terms of the integrity of the home. I think it's a modest change. I do prefer the original, but I was just curious about, you know, if you had any history about why it was changed or if it was a structural issue or?
No, no idea there.
Yeah.
I mean, just to give you an idea on this, when we moved in, the fountain drained to the sewer like a toilet. The cost to like change that so it didn't just drain water down the, into the sewer system and be constantly replaced was pretty mind blowing. Like, the stuff to maintain little things in this house is crazy, you know, without destroying it and putting a new, you know, Home Depot fountain in there.
All right, well, I'll stop sharing my obsessive detail with the.
If we didn't have COVID, you could all come have a tour.
I would love that.
I'll take you up on that in the future.
I'm happy to do it.
Actually, I would like to take a tour, too.
So anyway, if there are no other people with questions for the applicant, I guess we'll open it up to the public. So I'd like to open the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak for, against, or about this request for landmark designation?
I don't see any raised hands at this moment, Chair.
Then we'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move on to commissioner deliberation. Let's start with Vice Chair Boyle.
Not much to say. I just, I completely agree with this. I think that this is an extremely significant home. I am excited to be a part of it, you know, the little part that I have. We all have in terms of moving it towards historical significance, you know, being registered that way. And I just, I fully support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody.
Yeah, and I'd like to commend the applicant for a very thorough and enjoyable read on the application. It was extraordinarily well done and should be used, actually, for subsequent applicants who were putting together a request for landmark designation. It's not well done, so I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang.
Yes, I'm in support of the applicant's designation for the property. And I echo, I would echo everything that's been stated.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I concur, but would just add that I believe we should adopt the findings on pages 25 and 26 regarding how it's a work of a master architect, George Washington Smith. This is of the HR, HRG report, and also pages 27 to 29 of that same report that shows, that are good findings about how it's an example of a Spanish colonial revival style. And it would be those findings, I think, that would, could be added to justify why we are designating this as historic.
Thank you for giving us some meat to put in there for. Commissioner Okazaki.
I wanted to congratulate the owner for being the first one to designate this as a historical site in San Marino. And I was curious, are there other designations that you're going to be seeking at the state or the federal level?
We had a house in Philadelphia on the national registry, and I want to go through this process first. I don't know much about the state, but I do think that there's a potential to do something on the national level. It doesn't really do much other than put you on a registry.
Right.
But I think that it is a beautiful place, and I think it is, as an example of Spanish colonial architecture. I've never been in a house that has the same feeling that this one does. So I do think that that's something that I'd like to look into.
Yeah, I was going to encourage you to do that. I think it helps the city of San Marino if you do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And Commissioner Ross.
Well, you know, I've been around in this community a long time, and I really think it's wonderful that we have come to this point of recognizing historical significance. And I agree with Commissioner, no, Vice Chair Boyle, and that we are lucky to be part of the first group of commissioners to approve a historical value to this home.
Thank you. I don't want to take the wind out of anybody's sails, but Director Savantes, correct me if I'm wrong. Wasn't there an application for a house overrun Winston by Roland Coe? Did that ever go through, or did it stall out some?
No, no, no. They, that was before we had a historic preservation ordinance where we had a designation. So what they did is they provided a letter with a similar type of report and went directly to council, and the council designated the property.
I see. Okay, well, then, good. We are the first planning commission to undertake.
Yeah.
But I concur with my colleagues. I wholeheartedly am, I'm just very thankful that we have residents that are willing to take on this kind of a task with these beautiful treasures that we have in our community and are willing to, you know, put the necessary finances behind it as well. And I think we need to do what we can to support that. So given that and the apparent anatomy, unanimity on the group, do we have a potential motion?
I'll move to recommend we designated as historic with the added findings on pages 25 to 26 and 27 to 29 of the HRG report.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Dewitt, for a long meeting to get to your item.
My pleasure, and I promise not to tear down 60% of the house. I will clearly document it, and we will leave the house intact.
Well, I hope you're keeping your option, not option, your invitation open to give us a tour.
I'd love to do that. Aldo and I've been talking about this house since the first time we bought it, and I welcome doing that. It's a beautiful, beautiful property.
And good luck.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
So let's move on then to agenda item number four, Declaration of Public Nuisance at 2924 Gainesboro Drive. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, and I'll be brief with this one. Staff is requesting that the planning commission adopt the resolution declaring the property a public nuisance. There are a variety of issues that we've dealt with on this property for many years, most of which include property maintenance issues with respect to their front yard appearance. And so you may think that in looking at this property, that you've obviously seen worse and how we declaring this a public nuisance when all we're dealing with is the issue in the front yard. Well, I would say that, yes, I have seen properties in worse shape than this has. But this one specifically, the reason why we went down this path is because we are at our wit's end with the property owner, because they are not responsive for something as simple as providing the appropriate landscaping in front yards. A simple request as that upon staff to the owner has received very little, very, very little traction, almost no traction at all. And so given that there's been no response from the property owner, no intention to correct the violation, we're seeking that the city council, the city council, the planning commission declare the property a public nuisance and adopt the resolution, which is attachment two of your staff report. That's Resolution PCR 21-01. If the planning commission declares the property a public nuisance, essentially gives the property owner one last chance to abate the violation. If the violation is not taken care of within a certain period of time, it gives the ability of the city to access the property to make the improvements necessary, and then we bill the property owner for those costs. So that's where we are at this moment, and staff recommends the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners for city staff? Okay, then, given that, I guess, do we have the property owner or property owner's representative to state a position? Or, oh, okay, then let's move to public comment, or is this open to public comment?
It can be.
Oh, are there any members of the public who would like to comment about this request for a declaration of public nuisance? Well, okay, then I'm going to close public comment period. Let's move on to deliberation. Commissioner Brody.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of adopting the resolution.
Thank you. That's fairly succinct. Commissioner Chang.
Hey, I'm in favor of the resolution.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I agree. Director Savantes couldn't have given a better report to help me to decide, because I agree with him. It's not the worst I've seen, but I also agree that we need to help our staff. So I agree. Let's declare a public nuisance.
Okay, Vice Chair Boyle.
Concur with Aldo's been said.
And Commissioner Ross?
We've seen these things over the years, and I think they do help if we really sock it to them, so let's do it.
And Commissioner Okazaki.
I agree, but I.
You muted yourself, James.
I agree with everybody, but I have a question of Aldo. How many of these have we done in your career? Just wondering, over the last 17 years?
I've done, well, a lot of them don't have to get to this level, because prior to getting to this level, we do a variety of code enforcement notices. In this case, we've done several. This is dating back to when Ron was here as a code enforcement officer. And it does, it does, there are a variety of steps before getting to this point, and that is a notice of violation to abate the issue within a certain timeframe. If there's no response, or if there's little response, we, you know, certainly provide some flexibility in the timeframe. But if there's no response, we provide our city prosecutor the opportunity of sending a letter as well. Typically, that is what gets a lot of these abatements resolved, is a letter from a city prosecutor saying, abate, or we're going to court. When that fails, we go down this path. And so my history in this town, I've done about four of these. The first one, when I came in, was already completed. It was the Claypool residence on, I believe it was near Somerset Place, some of that area where we actually had to declare public nuisance and in fact, enter the property and do a significant amount of work to the site. And of course, what happens is when the city enters the property and does the work itself, we pass the cost along to the property owner, and we recover the cost via levy. When the, when the property is sold, the city recovers this cost for that work.
Is the house abandoned?
Yes, it's one of the bacon houses that we have in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur with everything that has been said, everything everybody has said to date. I just, I have, I've lived in that area of town. I live just up Palomar, up the hill from there. I go by that house fairly frequently. I cannot remember when it did not look the way it looks, and I really don't think it's just the front yard. I took a look around the backyard, and I have to admit, I was a little bit scared walking in the backyard, because I didn't know what might come out of the bushes at me, so heavily overgrown. So do we have a motion for this?
Is it, I move to approve 2924 Gainesboro as a public nuisance? Is that my? I just moved to declare.
Right.
Yes. I move to declare 2924 Gainesboro Drive a public nuisance.
I'll second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, on to our resolution of findings. Agenda item number five, resolution of findings. Yes.
Yeah, can we go back one more? I didn't see in the motion the adoption of the resolution.
Oh, no.
Yeah, if we can just make that, if someone were to motion for that and go through the roll call, that'd be great.
Shall we do that?
So motion to adopt the resolution is what I'm looking for.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so then what do I say? I move to.
To adopt the.
I move to declare 2924 Gainesboro Drive a public nuisance and to adopt.
Resolution.
Resolution number, uh-oh, what is it?
21, 2102.
2102.
Who did it, then?
Give me a second, somebody.
Second?
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes, but I believe it's Resolution PCR 21-01.
Director Savantes.
Is that correct? It's 2101, right?
2101, yeah.
Okay, all right, yes, I second. I mean, I concur.
Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, whatever he said.
Vice Chair Boyle? And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so now on to resolution of findings. And item number five, yes?
Okay, you know, I'm going to have a couple of changes.
Absolutely.
Just a typo, the first whereas, whereas on August 31st, 2020, and applications for? Should it be an application or applications for? I'm not really, I don't really care, but I think it's an application for medical use and parking variance. Well, no, have been. Applications for, whatever, just, it's not right. And then my second and last comment is, I'm not following the finding section 2D, but this could be me, that the site for the proposed conditional use will relate to streets and highways of adequate width and pavement. will relate to streets and highways of adequate width and pavement? Is that the correct finding, will relate to?
Good point.
Section 2, capital D.
Do you have a page number on that?
Well, on mine, it's, yeah, it's page 318 of 321 of the agenda. That's where I am.
300?
Yeah, I mean, that's the last one I got from.
Oh, okay.
But, but, but actually, but it's just the end of the agenda, you know, it's the end.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like the third or fourth page from the end. And it's page two of this, of this resolution. I just.
I have 182 of 184.
Okay, we can just leave it what, you know, that's just my comment. I don't want to belabor it.
And Commissioner Wright, you just want to make sure that that's consistent to the findings that we have in the code, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can check that.
Yeah, it didn't sound right to me, but what?
It doesn't sound right. We can, if it's not, then we'll change it.
Please, so typo and just check that finding. And then.
Okay.
I would move to approve.
Was there concern that the, that the finding states relate?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like, that the way our finding is, that the site for the proposed conditional use will relate to streets and.
So I'm actually looking at the city code now. And that's actually.
That is the wording?
Yeah, it does.
Will relate to streets. I see, I thought it was more like that the site is, you know, is that, does have adequate width and pavement or whatever. It just doesn't say really, that's fine then. If that's what the finding is, we need to, maybe we, we change that with another ordinance later on. But that's fine then. Okay, just a little typo, I move to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And on to agenda item number six, resolution of findings. Design review number DRC 20-73 HP at 1831 Windsor Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I believe that's the end of our agenda. Agenda item number seven, that resolution was presented, I believe, previously and adopted. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yes, it is.
And then I apologize, Director Cervantes, I think you wanted to make a comment about the housing element and community participation, but I forgot to romp you at that, at the public comments at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if there's anybody left on to hear about it now, but.
Yeah, there's no one left, but I'll do the plug anyways. I, I just wanted to let, if you can just spread the word, we do, are in the process of a housing element update, as well as a safety element update. And we've, we've developed a survey that is, that can be found on our city, our city website. And looking for anyone to really provide as much comments as possible through that survey as far as housing opportunities. We have about 19 responses so far, but we'd like to get a lot more. And so we will be looking at some social media marketing of the survey. But if you can spread the word of the availability of the survey to comments on the housing elements as we're about to go down this path of looking at what type of housing opportunities we'll be looking to put into the document itself. And so, and so, yeah, just a, just a plug about that survey. And also want to mention that we're, we'll be adjourning this meeting, not to the February 10th. Joint meeting will be adjourning to our regular meeting at the end of February, where we will have our own dedicated discussion about the housing elements. We don't necessarily have to do a joint meeting with the city council. We prefer to have a, a meeting amongst the planning commission to discuss housing elements, as well as what those housing opportunities look like. And we'll take those recommendations to the city council for them to consider at a later meeting. It's just kind of formality in terms of our process. And so there, there you go, that, there's my, my plug about that.
Great, thank you. And I'll encourage all of my fellow commissioners to please, if you have not already done so, avail yourself to submitting your own comments on the housing element.
Right.
Thank you, everyone, for our first meeting of 2021. Yes.
Yeah, it, just for city staff, for some reason, I didn't get the Zoom invitation. So whenever you're giving me the agenda, even if it's once, twice, or three times with additions, please always include the Zoom invitation along with it, because unfortunately, I didn't get one this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.